March fourth, two thousand and eighteen Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. As we, let me read a statement here, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will video and audio, will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or other tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Is anyone that's videotaping or recording this? Now we move on and we go to a pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here for weekly briefing?
Carolyn, I'm sorry, Carolyn, maybe they'll move up here then. Oh, I'm getting closer, be careful.
I can duck pretty, my reactions are okay.
Thanks. Carolyn Carey, the community center, but today I'm just announcing some things about the cultural center. March eleventh through seventeenth is Brain Injury Awareness Month. And at the cultural center, we're going to have a roundtable discussion on March thirteenth from nine thirty to eleven. It is free and we invite people to come in and take a look at what participate or learn more about brain injuries and how people are living with them and prospering and doing great things. We happen to have someone at the cultural center who has had a brain injury and she's very successful over there. So that is on March thirteenth from nine to eleven over at the cultural center. And the next one is one I announced before, on Saturday, March sixteenth at ten a.m. we're going to take our aerial photo with the help of Channel Eighteen to spell out the words Art Week so that we can have another great year of publicity for the town at ten a.m. on March sixteenth outside of the cultural center.
Explain that to me, was public invited to watch him take a photograph?
No, the public's invited to be the photograph. We're going to spell out the letter, the word.
Oh, I see, so you need numbers of people to spell it out.
So we need people, come, stand in the letters and be part of it.
I didn't fully, I didn't fully understand that. Thank you, Carolyn.
My pleasure. I'm going to take this microphone back with me for the podium.
Okay. Anyone else while Carolyn's reorganizing the room, is anyone else for public comment, for weekly briefing rather? Anyone here for public comment?
Thank you.
If not, we'll move on then. Ed, will you wish to address the consent agenda?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move approval of the items there on, including the minutes, January twenty-second, regular session, February fourth, regular session, approve the application for Hockers and Petro's license by mobile mixers, approve the request by EverSource Energy to install forty feet of cable and conduit and one hand hole in the town road to provide service to customer at nine, six Northern Avenue, Harwich, and to accept the resignation of Sharon Fledger as a member of the wastewater support committee. And we will be holding the committee appointments to be taken up separately.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, as to Sharon's resignation, that's the third person on a really important committee and I would really like to ask the appointments committee to have them in to discuss what was.
Thank you, Don. I talked to, I followed up this morning and asked if the members of the wastewater committee would report to us is in the next couple of weeks, status report, the pros and cons of that committee, what went well, what possibly didn't, because I think that would be a good discussion for us to learn from.
My thinking of doing that in sequence, I'm not saying not do that, but my thinking of doing that in sequence is that oftentimes people will be more forthright when they're not being taped in a large meeting session.
I'm okay with that, just run a parallel, I think they can also record here.
Fine.
Okay? Michael?
Sharon was the chair of that committee, so she was getting the emails from the wastewater email address. There's no longer a quorum on that committee, so I think that the email address should go to Dan Pelletier would be my recommendation, so that he can follow through.
We'll coordinate forwarding. I'll talk to Foster and forward that to town staff.
Okay.
Until the committee makes so.
I just want to make clear that it shouldn't be forwarded, it should be, the whole email should be transferred over. I don't want the emails forwarded. You know what I'm saying? I don't want to get them and have them forwarded. That whole email address should probably go over to Dan.
We'll give somebody else access to it.
All right, I will, I will forward.
My terminology is probably wrong, but the intent is the same.
Anything that I get between now and the time that happens, I will forward to Dan and Megan, so that they would have records of it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, Sharon.
I just asked if Chris chooses somebody else, he lets the board know.
Yeah, Dan's probably fine.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Don, you wish to do the committee appointments as a separate?
Yeah, and I wanted to do that to give the expiration dates and at first what we had in the packet was kind of, it lopped off the last digits, so I want to make sure we get these right. I move that we appoint Kathy Tayen, the cultural council as a full member, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Christine Banks to the cultural council, term to expire June twentieth, two thousand and twenty, as a full member.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, I'm sorry. Sorry, I was listening to ding donging. Richard Kaiser to the bikeways committee is a full member to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Lorraine Raquel, cultural council with a term as a full member with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And James Armstrong as an alternate member to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to new business, our first item is the final budget to the finance committee. Chris, you have comments on this?
Just Mr. Chairman, that we did have the budget session on Saturday and I think that the finance committee was inquiring about what the status was of the budget. Certainly my recommendation is by charter, I have an obligation to submit a balanced budget for the board review, but that's my budget that's balanced and if the board wants to make a, you know, adjustments to it, certainly ultimately would be the selectman's version that gets presented to the finance committee. But whatever the board's pleasure is, whether you want to adopt a preliminary budget that was submitted by the administrator knowing that changes would be made or whatever the board's desire is.
Okay. Comments on the budget?
Yeah, a lot of comments.
I, I have, I have one short one.
Go ahead, you start.
I'll start then. Chris, I'm uncomfortable with one aspect of the budget and that is the, the revenue side of it is based on the increase in the room tax from four to six percent. And, you know, I know that's a matter to come up later than that, but, you know, that's a broad assumption of what our action is as a board of selectmen, that, that may or may not be passed at town meeting. And my concern is to base that, and to base a budget on somewhat a nifty proposition, I recall that when we looked at room tax before, the, that item, it filled the two town meetings and so I would, I think to base a budget on that, that assumption is highly risky. I would much prefer having a budget based on the four percent going in so that, as I say, regardless of what our action is tonight, this is, is a little bit more, it's more of a conservative budget that we have a chance to meet. And that's, that's my, my comment overall. And I'll give up before, Michael.
Larry, I would agree with you a hundred percent. That's my concern and we're taking up later whether we're going to include the two percent in the warrant or not. So at very least, I'd like to see that two percent, which equals three hundred and fifty thousand taken out. I think we are still waiting for a school committee to come back to us with some answers to a lot of questions that we had, but I think that the school needs to own the hundred and seventy-five thousand that you have in there for them. We're still waiting on final school budget numbers for school buses and what maintenance and fuel and insurance and the rest of that's going to cost. I'm still looking for the school to come up with where they tried to cut any administration and anything on the top end rather than just laying off eight and a half teachers. So there's a lot of questions I'm still waiting for on the school budget. You know, I think, Chris, you have a line item in there for Monomoy for capital and for the hundred and seventy-five thousand, so a hun, four hundred and thirty-five thousand in that budget. Question on Cape Cod Tech, Chris. You have in there, in the first part of the budget, forty-seven and a half percent increase for Cape Cod Tech?
That's the debt exclusion kicks in, they have, they already borrowed the money for the construction of the new school, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Was the increase on that?
Looking at the, you know, in addition to your proposed budget of over seventy million, we're looking at debt service going from four point seven sixty million to five point eight eight one million, you know, a twenty, twenty-three and a half percent increase there on top of your proposed budget, which is a seven and a, seven point eight percent increase. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, I don't see how we're going to sustain this and how we can continue to sustain these increases in town and school budgets. I think, you know, we, we claim that we care about affordable housing, we claim that we care about the seniors that can't afford their taxes, yet every year we're going up five to seven percent in our budgets and the school on a, on a fairly large budget's going up four plus percent every year. And I, I don't, I don't get the argument that we're continually saying that we're concerned about people not being able to pay their taxes when we increase them the amount that we do every single year. So I'm not supporting the budget at all, but I would be comfortable sending it to finance committee with a minimum of three hundred and fifty thousand out. And if you want to spend the night on this, I have, I don't know, probably fifty line item questions that, if you look at the five-year trend that you gave us on the line item budgets, some things change by a hundred, only a hundred dollars every year and I'm wondering if this is just a function of basic budget numbers and not going through line item by line item and cutting where we can cut. The, the harbor, for instance, and I'll have to find it, maybe you can move on for a second, but the harbor this year, you're showing, I believe it's fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars less in revenue and slips and, and moorings. And if I do my math correct, based on the expansion of the harbor, we should be getting quite a chunk more.
Supposed to have about eleven more slips?
So I don't understand why we would show that much of a decrease. Community development, twenty-six percent increase in expenses for community development and I believe last year there was a fair amount of holdover money in community development that was either given back or reused to purchase the new vehicle. I believe that money was encumbered. So again, I have a lot of questions. But I would be comfortable moving on to finance committee with at least taking out the three hundred and fifty thousand that we don't have yet.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Don, let me go with Don first, Jack, and then we'll, Don?
I agree with Michael. That was a, a comment that I had made last week when the chair wasn't here. I would split it a hundred and seventy-five for the school based on the budget that was submitted, I don't know what they're going to come in at ultimately, and a hundred and seventy-five on the town side, but I, I would like to start with one specific thought is the assistant cemetery administrator would be the first place I'd go.
That's already out, it was not included in my budget.
Okay, well, it wasn't as of Saturday when we were discussing it.
Yes, it was.
It was discussed, but it was out.
Okay, if it's out, then I'm good with that, but I think Larry's right. At this point in time, one of the major things that we're going, have to wait to see because there's been other wrinkles too about people that wanted to sequester some of that funding for a particular purpose. The state's increase is collateral with this. We have no way of knowing going into this year, which makes me uneasy about spending money I don't have, what the impact on occupancy is going to be with that and the wastewater part that are happening irrespective of what we do to adopt the extra two percent. With that in mind, I, I would be much more comfortable just taking the money out, worrying about adopting it when we have something that we're comparing it against, because right now it's in a total vacuum, have no idea whether everybody's going to just stay with it, stay here, spend their money and pay the extra funding, or whether they're going to find an alternative and thereby reduce the total collected, you know, to the town. So with that, if somebody makes a motion to that effect, I'd be supportful of eliminating the three fifty entirely.
Chris?
Mr. Chair, what I was kind of hoping to do was if the board votes to not include it in the warrant, then I would then go and make the necessary reductions. I understand what the board's saying about overall, if I have to come up with three hundred and fifty thousand, then I would identify three hundred and fifty thousand. If the board wants me to do a hundred and seventy-five from Monomoy, certainly I can look at that, you know, or do that piece and then take a hundred and seventy-five out of the town side. I just, the board, the board was split last time, two to two. In terms of just on the rooms tax, the four percent to six percent, because we've already been assessing the four percent since two thousand, I'm sorry, since nineteen, the nineteen eighties, we have a good track record on that, so going from four to six, we can actually plan for that money and DOR will allow us to use that. On the new revenue from the short-term rentals, DOR has indicated that we cannot, cannot make any projections to what that number would be for the FY twenty budget. So we won't have a use for that or a projection until FY twenty-one. So I have no discretion, I, DOR will not allow us to use that as a revenue source anyway. So on, on the short-term rentals, the additional money from those homes that are rented out through vacation owner, vacation rentals by owner and those such, those items would not be able to be included in FY twenty anyway. But there's four to six, only because we have a long track record of that, they would allow us to, to take into account that number. But if the board votes to not include that in the warrant, then I'll make the necessary reductions to balance the budget on that topic.
And I appreciate that. I guess the point I was trying to make is that whether we vote or not, the electorate hasn't always, the town media hasn't always, hasn't always agreed with the board. And, and so I would make that budget conservative so we, we're covered rather than.
And just to that, to that point, you know, I've been the administrator here now for five years, I think this is actually my sixth budget that I've worked on, and we have done contingency budgets before and we just need to identify where those reductions are and we would do the same thing in this circumstance, but just, we would have a plan and then if it wasn't voted, then we would have a plan to make those reductions. We'll do that sooner obviously, if the board doesn't vote to.
Jack, and then I'll get to Ed, Ed is studying.
Good evening, Jack Brown from the finance committee. Procedural question, when does the charter require the selectmen to deliver the budget to the FinCom?
We have that calendar with us.
February twenty-fifth.
You have to go to the wayback machine.
It is in the calendar, it's February twenty-fifth.
The question that I have for you beyond that is I think I've heard a couple, three people talk about what they would do on motions and what they wouldn't do on motions and it just strikes me that maybe it's time for some intense discussion about what we're really going to do here, because some of those cuts may make more sense than others and we wait until the last minute to get them back and there's no, no place to move around. I think, I think there's too much discretion at this point late in the game and I'd really urge us to work on getting there sooner rather than later.
Yeah. Michael?
Jack, I couldn't agree with you more.
I know.
The one, the one thing that we need to address is when the board of selectmen gets the budget, because we've only had preliminary shots of the budget as of two weeks ago. And this, this process should include a lot more time for the board of selectmen to go through it before the finance committee gets it.
Right.
And, and I'm willing to go along with what seems to be the consensus tonight, but I want to be clear that the three hundred and fifty thousand in my mind is just a start because we're looking at another seven point eight percent increase in a budget this year that is sixty-eight million dollars and another twelve million dollars-ish of spending on top of that.
Yeah, and of course, Mike, I understand that.
And I would agree with that in the sense, Jack, that, you know, we have the charter timeline, schedule that we've talked about, there's nothing prevents us from requesting the budget information sooner and we need, and we need to do that. We need to make up a schedule within what our requirement is to make us more comfortable because coming down to the last moment is not, is not fair to anyone.
Well, again, in the last couple of minutes, I've heard two or three different things we could do. And so the question is, why not just make some motions, see what the votes are and, you know, make it less speculative right now? Okay? That's my comment.
I would, I'll turn it over to Don. I would argue at this point that, well, Don, I'll let you go first.
Well, for that comment, thanks.
I'm here with you, Don.
What I would say is, not only is Jack right, but there's two things that are going on here. First of all, I don't want to roll in with a bunch of alternatives that have to do with motions because it's confusing enough to deal with a town meeting without making a motion that amends a budget somehow. It's, it's insane. People, people tend to vote against that which they don't understand. We're not being responsible if we give them amended motions, but, so, part of what Jack's saying is get this done sooner rather than later, and I agree with that. The second part is, this is one of those self-inflicted wounds and it cannot happen again next year. How were we going to vote ever? A final budget, if we got it late and we didn't get the town department heads in front of us until this past Saturday, which was after the February twenty-fifth deadline, you really want to be able to get in front of the people who advocated their own budgets. It may be that you want to increase something that you cut or decrease something that we feel is overfunded, but you can't take a run at that until you actually go through that whole Saturday extravaganza and listen to everybody, in which, at which case we'd only be, you know, shooting darts blindfolded in accepting the budget unless we were just going to blindly go ahead and accept the administrator's budget, which is really not the intent of the process. It's supposed to work, you submit a budget to us, we vet it by talking to the people who it pertains to, we make our own adjustments to it, we vote them, we send it over to FinCom so that they've got a sufficient amount of time to discuss it and they were, are the ones who would make a recommendation to town meeting about a final budget. But this thing is so off the track now, the, I think, I understand where Jack's coming from, but we can't go back. We've already missed the deadline and we should never do that again.
Chris?
Mr. Chairman, just, and certainly this is really a charter discussion more than it is a budgeting discussion because I'm required, and I think I understand a little bit as the administrator, that on the charter, it specifically says that the, the budget message has to be in the budget, the town administrator presents the budget, in this case it was February eleventh. And I think the reason why they chose the beginning of February is generally the, the governor's budget comes out at the end of January, health insurance rates tend to be set in January, there's a few pretty good milestones in that. I think to the, to Don's concern is, you know, the time here, that it goes from February eleventh to February twenty-fifth, which is really only two weeks, that the board of selectmen is required to submit the final budget to the FinCom. And, you know, those are, those are charter dates, those aren't administrator dates, those are charter dates. So, you know, I think if you want to have more time, and I don't disagree, but there has to be something kind of built into the schedule to allow for some of that to occur.
Yeah. Don? I said this on Saturday, but it probably only was heard by three people who didn't have anything better to do over the weekend, so I'm going to say it again. You can make that comment, but you can't make it honestly because there's a brick wall at the end of this process. You have to have a sufficient amount of time to publish the warrant, it has to go to the printer, it has to be in the newspaper on a public advertisement. So with all of that, there isn't the kind of wiggle room that you suggest if we just merely push the date out in the charter somehow, that can't happen. You've got to be able by state law to come up with a published warrant and sufficient time for the meeting to occur. So if that's a deadline, which it is, you really only have like two weeks more that we could ever get if we wanted to change anything in this. The charter doesn't say thou shalt not do it before, the charter gives you a drop dead date that by this date you got to do, by this date you have to do, by this date you have to do. We can pull that back if we decide we want to, and this is chaotic.
Well, we, we need to, we need to improve, but, but right now we need to consider where we are on this budget and I'll see where your motion is. My hope is, is that we will move ahead minus the three fifty and ask the town administrator to, because you're the most intimate with all the line items, to come back with recommendations how that, how that budget looks with that, with that number. And then we can challenge that as we go forward, you know, you know, Mike will ask some questions.
And I just, just for clarity's sake, I mean, I understand the three fifty, but I did hear Don said, you know, he wants me to split that evenly between the school and the municipal. Is that the, kind of the intent of the entire board?
Well, that, that confused me a bit, other, Michael, I need to investigate that. Michael?
Yeah, that's not my motion, that's not what I would support. I, I would support removing the three hundred and fifty thousand out of the budget and then turning it to the finance committee for further work, but by no means am I saying that I think this is the final selectman's budget going to the finance committee. Because I, I would, I would ask that you go through these line items, especially the, all these, I mean, we asked the school for three and a quarter percent, they're at four and a half percent and, and plus a hundred and seventy-five thousand that you put in there on top of the capital. And a lot of these other line items, Chris, are five point five, nine point four, five point six, seven point five. Every single budget, for the most part, is up equaling that seven point seven percent and I, I can't, I can't support that.
Just on the seven point seven percent, you know, I'm willing to take a beating on certain things, but, you know, there's certain things that just, it's not fair, to be perfectly honest. And, and one thing, a lot of the, the drivers to this is that on debt exclusions have been approved. I legally cannot ignore a legally voted debt exclusion. So a lot of projects have been approved by the townspeople, whether, you know, certainly none of them are unanimous, but those ones are built in to the project. And then the other one that really has created a lot of fiscal stress has been doing these collective bargaining agreements and I'm the first to say that if we don't do some of these collective bargaining agreements to move us from the lower tier to the mid-tier, we're probably going to be forced to do that anyway in, in terms of some of the salary adjustments. But that has created a lot of fiscal stress in the budget and these are actions that were taken, you know, by other town votes, you know, or by this board in, in some respects. It creates a lot of pressure. I will do what I can do to, to balance things out and certainly just on the line by line, I at least probably spend three or four times going over each line by line.
You have the antipathy knowledge, that's what I suggest.
And it's, it's hard to, some go up for certain reasons and some go down, so the net's really what I try to pay attention to. But we certainly can go through and there will be pain to cut back, but certainly we can do that.
Okay. I, I, just, just one clarifying comment. I saw the a hundred and seventy-five comment, Don, you made was a separate issue from, from bringing the budget down to excluding the consideration of the four to six percent at this moment. I still see that as being a risky, a revenue assumption.
I, I agree, but the reason I wanted to divvy up a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and seventy-five is because there seems to be, the a hundred and seventy-five to the school was not associated with, with anything that I would feel like wedded to and I feel uncomfortable because we haven't gotten an answer to what the final school budget is and that, and yet that's a component of our budget.
Michael?
Chris, thank you for the clarification. I agree the twenty-three and a half percent debt exclusions that get voted, you don't have any control over that. But this board at some point needs to take a lead in educating people or whatever the next board is, needs to educate people on, on what the, what it means when they vote this stuff. You know, this year we've already approved to put on the warrant the lower county road project, which is going to add another five million. I know we're playing around with our road money to get it under that, but that's going to add that to the mix as well. And we've got capital purchases in the capital plan being funded by the operating budget as well. So, you know, I think that, Chris, on top of the seven point seven overall, each department's budget as you go through it is five to eight and there's very few of them that are under or even close to what the board of selectmen's budget message was. So I think we as a board need to take a lead on the budget and start saying no to some things and paying for some things rather than spending all of our free cash on, on more equipment and more, 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 more. At some point we have to stop.
Ed?
Not in the issue that Michael raised about educating the public when they vote debt exclusions, what, what those costs are going to be, is when we deliver our tax bills, is there any prohibition from segregating out the different items of debt exclusion? Because, you know, each, each debt exclusion adds a certain. Because, you know, each, each debt exclusion adds a certain cents per thousand to the tax rate.
Yeah, Carol has put some of those numbers together.
Having, you know, previous state I lived in, every property tax you bill, you had your, your property tax for jet, your town government operating costs, and then you had, if there was, we had a pension tax for the pension fund, but then, then everything else was either this, uh, uh, all of the different construction programs that had been authorized by debt exclusion. And, and people understood where their money was going and what it was costing them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with that. I've worked in a couple other states, so I know exactly what you're referring to. I mean, that has not been the practice in, in Massachusetts. I can certainly look and see if some of the larger ones could be segmented off, so people have a sense. But I'd have to look and see what's capable of being done in municipal or not.
And what's legal.
What's, basically, what's legal.
Yeah.
I can't imagine that giving people more information is, is going to be illegal.
Yeah, no, no.
But maybe in, in Massachusetts, that's the case.
It's more what's on the bill and what's not. We certainly can provide a list to people to show exactly what's going towards what project.
We just can't pretend to influence them. Uh, Don?
I totally agree with Ed.
If I could just, this would come after, um,
The town meeting.
The, the, the bond issue or whatever was approved, so it wouldn't influence the vote. But people would then have a sense, you know, okay, this is twenty-two million. Let's see, that last one we did, two twenty-two million, that's what, that's what it cost me on my bill. They'd be in a better position.
Thank you, Ed. Don?
I, I agree with Ed. More information is always better than less information. The, the, the problem that I have is, the breakout isn't necessarily sufficient unless it, it has in the insert that, and here are the capital items you've already voted for, but we have yet to bill you. Because there's this sense of well-being that seems to associate the, this where you vote for it in, say, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. We haven't voted it, we haven't actually borrowed it yet. And you get a bill, and in the ensuing period, you get the town meeting, and we're talking about, I don't know, everybody breaks it down to like six cups of coffee a week, it costing you. But it becomes a whole lot more cups of coffee if you start including the things you already actually agreed to that really haven't hit your bill yet. And everybody has to consider how much money they've got available to them when they're making these votes at town meeting. So at some point, if the, if that enclosure includes the breakout of where we're at in terms of what's borrowings and what's operating, and also, by the way, folks, you've approved so-and-so, and you have yet to see that hit you in anticipation of us asking you for more. I'd be all for having as much information as the law would allow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any comments from the audience? If not, I entertain a motion. Michael?
I move we send the presented budget minus three hundred and fifty thousand in anticipated rooms tax increase to the Finance Committee in working form for their considerations.
Is there a second?
If he also wants to add and delete the three hundred and fifty thousand from the expenditure side.
I said minus three hundred and fifty thousand.
If there's no revenue, just, I gotta, I gotta balance it.
No override, is what I'm saying.
We still have to have this come back to us. I said work in form, so. It's gotta go through Finance Committee.
I'll second it then.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to one?
Three to one.
Okay, moving on then, the item B is open and close a special town meeting. Open March twelfth and close March fourteenth. Is there, yeah, Chris, you, you know, this is a standard procedure.
You, you have on the calendar here that we had done on the, the budget calendar from earlier, vote to open the special town meeting, and then obviously, March twelfth and close on Thursday, March fourteenth. All special town meeting articles must be received forty days prior to the special town meeting. So to Don's point earlier, the forty days kind of drives a little bit the, the timing in terms of this. So that, that was what we had on.
This backs up the forty days.
This backs it up.
Don?
Yeah, I, I have never looked at this as an opportunity for anybody who missed the deadline in the general public and say, whoops. Well, we always have the second shot. What do we have that we want to create a special for?
This would be-
On the municipal side, the government.
Yeah, last year, we did incorporate the, the two traditional ones that we have are snow and ice deficits and any shortfalls in any of the accounts. And we've incorporated those into the annual town meeting warrant and say adjustments for nineteen. So administratively, we don't have anything that we would need to have for a special. It has been the practice since I've been here to allow the general public to have that window to submit to, so.
Yeah, and I think we'll continue to do so, right, Don? Is there a, any more discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Move that we open and close the special town meeting warrant, open on March twelfth and close on, uh, March fourteenth, end of business.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is, Don, opposed?
Aye.
One opposed?
Three to one.
Three to one. But the opposition is buried along this side.
It was funny that I didn't hear anything.
I thought it was a ground swell.
Well, and then we just comment that for private petitioners, Chris, you, I assume, offer the same help as you had before.
Yes.
Although, uh, they have to jump through more, through more hoops now. It has to be approved by-
I believe it's a hundred signatures on this, as opposed to-
And also, as go through this budget, go through Finance Committee as well.
Correct.
Correct. In addition to Board of Selectmen, so it's a little more tougher, it's tougher now. For the special, it does. We can check that later. Okay, D, appoint one member to the Management Board of the Cape Cod and Island Water-
C.
C. I just, let me say that we had an executive session, uh, prior to this, and I, in error, then mentioned not moving into our open session, but pursuant to the MGL thirty-eight, twenty-one, we met in the executive session to consider the Cornelius Pond Conservation Restriction. And outcome of that meeting is, we voted unanimously to approve the conservation restriction. And I'm reporting this now. Is there any further discussion on that? We don't, obviously, don't have to vote again, since we voted in the executive session. Then I'll move to D, which is appoint one member of the Management Board of the Cape Cod and Island Water Protection Fund to serve a term of three years.
Explain what that Water Protection Fund is.
The Water Protection Fund is the, uh, fund, Chris, you wanna go through?
Try to give a stab. I thought the material in the package was actually pretty informative. But it's part of that rooms tax that goes into place, short-term rentals that go into place. They did expand the state statute that allows for the, the rooms related to hotel and motel, that there is a, an additional surcharge that goes on for wastewater purposes, and that is two point seven five percent.
And that's an opt-out.
Uh, that is, well, for the first year, it's, it has to be in there. There is an opt-out provision, certainly stipulations that go with that opt-out. But for the first year, it would be collected, and that the money that is generated would be a supplemental. I, I think people have heard me in the past say that there's a state revolving loan fund program that has state funds that loan people, that loan municipalities that do water and sewer projects throughout the Commonwealth, and they have zero percent or two percent at a discounted rate. This would actually be money that's a separate pool of money. But the SRF process would be the approval process to select projects that would be considered. And what this is doing is it creates a separate entity to, and they call it the Cape and Island Water Protection Fund. So for projects that are specifically related to our nitrogen removal on Cape Cod, that this board would have the option of being able to select that. So the initial approval process would be SRF, and then the final approval process, if you would, would come from this group. And this group is made up of representatives of each of the fifteen municipalities on the Cape. And they have a stipulation that it would be a member of the Board of Selectmen, an administrative officer, or a officer in the organization that's kind of specializes in Department of Public Works types issues. So it does have a limit to who can be selected. I believe in a few towns that have already selected, they have you, had selectmen be appointed. So that certainly is something that we've seen so far in some other communities.
Okay. Uh, Michael?
If I may, I'd like to move that we appoint Don Howell to the Management Board of the Cape Cod and, Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund to serve a term of three years.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. We're back.
Is there any further discussion?
I, I just, one thing. It's, it's asking for, it's asking for a three-year term.
Term, yeah.
Selectmen are only elected for three years, so does that just turn over when a selectman turns over?
I think that's the intent.
I think that has to be the intent.
Okay.
And that's, uh, we have Sandy here, but that's one of the bylaw changes we're talking about too, I think, in town committees, so.
I guess the, the only other comment I have is, you know, Don's on the DHY board with you.
Right.
And he has shown great representation in that, as have you, but you are on all of our other wastewater stuff, and that's why I made the motion.
Yeah, and, and I, and I appreciate that. That's, that's appropriate. And I think the only one other that has some interest is you, Ed, but, uh, we have a, we'll see where this goes. Right now, we have a motion and a second for Don. Is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Who was the final vote?
Well, three to one, one abstention, Ed. Is that where you are?
Three, zero, one.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is contracts. Old businesses authorize the town administrator to execute all sewer collection system phase two SRF grant and loan activities, vote to authorize. You know, Michael, you have-
If we could have that on from March eighteenth.
March eighteenth, okay.
Steve Young is here.
Okay, good. Because we need some discussion on that. Uh, warrant article reviews, one is-
If we, if we could just mention to the public that that is being held, because we have a, a wide variety of wastewater topics next meeting, so we're gonna add that to that meeting.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Michael. Next is warrant, article review, budget warrant timeline, timeline. Chris, I'll, I think we've, we've kind of beat about this. I'm not sure what the discussion point is.
Yeah, we have kind of talked about that already. I don't know if there's any additional discussion or not, but.
My only discussion point is, we talk about this, we need this agenda item after this calms down to be sure we're moving in the right direction next, uh, next year. And we discuss this every year. Somehow, we have to get this straight, so we're more comfortable. Uh, next is Article Four, except provision of MGL, Chapter sixty-four G three A's local excise, excise tax. And that, to put it in English, is the four to six percent room tax.
Yeah, and just on these three, the board did not vote, uh, take a final vote on any of these three items. So these would be the remaining three items that would go on or off the warrant, depending on how the board votes. So this, this concludes, or hopefully would conclude tonight, what's the final warrant gonna look like in terms of the annual town meeting. So the three articles that were not voted were the, the four to six, and then the two related to the charter amendments.
Okay. I guess I was the odd man out last week, and so I've been giving this a lot of thought once I came back and realized that. You know, I've heard from people that are for included and those that are against it. I expressed my number one concern, and that was just the overall budget, how we address that. I do have concerns about raising the four to six percent and doing so in a competitive environment, what that does to, uh, our businesses, motels already, where we, we do in fact compete with other communities. You know, I'm showing my, uh, my age, I guess, but I moved here in the year two thousand. And, uh, bought a motel. And the first year, we had a very busy fall season, shoulder season, because we had, and I see Matt there, he'll remember this. We had a lot of tuna fishermen coming out of Sacatacak Harbor, and so I had a great off-season. The Water Committee decided to increase the fee significantly because it was so busy. It turned out, all those people went to Chatham then, and so the next, the year after that, I was almost dead. So even though sometimes we think we're isolated, we may not be. And we're already asking, you know, we're at four percent, and this will include not only the existing motels, which are, quite frankly, struggling a little bit anyway, because they compete against our, our houses that we have the bedroom. But now, this is a new tax for the houses that will, in total, be twelve something percent, which is quite a jump to weight. I'd like to let that go for a, at least a year to see what the repercussions that is before we talk about increasing it from four to six percent. It has come up, and I, I'm trying to remember, it's, it's been a year or two since I've gone to college, been in college. Because I remember Economics one oh one, anytime you have a tax increase, the thought always is, is that the consumer pays for that. I think, as I remember that, that's not, that's not necessarily true. There's always some breakdown that the, in this case, the consumer would pay for most, for at least a part of it. But part of that also goes back to the owner. And so this was also part of this to come back to the owner of the houses, if we end up picking up some of those, some of those costs. My final point is, is that, I know, Chris, and I take your point, we're always asking for do more and we're doing less. But, and I also take the argument that a fee is not a tax, but I would argue that a fee is a localized tax. And we need to be careful about how we raise taxes, and be really careful about that. And so with those types of considerations, I, you know, since I seem to be the, the swing vote here after last year's, I, I would vote against this. And that's where I am. So I don't know if anyone wants to bring it back as a motion or, you know, more discussion. I'm willing to listen. I've been on the fence on this. I'm trying to very carefully think it through. Michael?
I'll just repeat my objection or some of them. So we've had no public comment or hearings on this. It failed at two town meetings already to, to up this. The businesses that are already paying the four percent are subject to five point seven percent from the state. And two point seven five, that's gonna go into the water fund already, which is gonna put them at twelve point four, five percent. So why hit them with another two percent if we don't have to right now? There's no plan in place on where this money will go. So we've, we've given no thought to what infrastructure we'll put it towards, or wastewater or housing. So there's been no thought given to this at all. The other part of this legislation, the Airbnbs, they're giving, they're being given a one-year holiday. So are we really gonna punish the inns and motels with an extra two percent for them to pay for by themselves? And I argued last week that maybe we should be looking at reducing the four percent, because the bucket of money that's gonna come in once the Airbnbs and whatnot pay is gonna be a much larger bucket of money. So until we come up with a, a place where this money is going to go, I think it's inappropriate to spend it on the operating budget.
Ed?
Mike, can you explain your comment about the one-year holiday?
They're not paying, their, Airbnbs are not paying, what, until July? So when are they gonna start paying? And is there any mechanism in the state right now to even, to, to police that, to make sure that they get paid?
Well, that's the charge to the Department of Revenue.
Is it set up?
And the Department of Revenue does a very good job of collecting all revenues that are currently owed to the Commonwealth and the towns. I can't imagine that they're going to fail on this and stay in, stay in office.
Yeah. Michael?
So Ed, you're saying with certainty that all of the, all of the rental, the people that are renting their houses now on the Cape and the Airbnbs, private rentals, the rest of them are gonna pay their taxes starting on July first?
Airbnbs, because Airbnb has been working with the Department of Revenue as this, and, and the legislature as this has been developed. They already provide tax returns, ten ninety-nines for all of their patrons, so they're probably the, going to be the easiest group to collect the, the revenue from. The next easiest group are people that use services and, and list through there, because they'll be easy to find out who, who, what those properties are. There will probably be some people that, uh, potentially, who listed themselves. There will probably be some people that, uh, uh, potentially, uh, who listed themselves, rent, rented themselves, have, uh, that may try and not pay the tax, but I think, you know, there are folks that we know around town who, uh, don't pay taxes on a lot of things that they should be paying taxes on.
Okay, Michael?
I just, I guess, Ed, I, I will, uh, you have more confidence in the system than I do, and I, and I have not seen it set up. And next year, when we have, uh, some history, then I think I can have a much more intelligent conversation about it.
Don?
But-
Okay, Ed, excuse me, then Ed finishes.
You know, as to the Airbnb getting a holiday, they start on, uh, July first, just as, uh, short-term rentals of houses start on July first. Uh, those people who were, uh, running bed and breakfasts that didn't have more than four units, they start on July first. So there's nobody's particularly, no class is getting a particular holiday.
Okay.
Okay, Don?
I'm not gonna wade in on that. What I really do feel, however, is, is that, uh, at the MMA, we had, uh, a couple of members of Legislative Delegation, I've heard discussion as it was winning its way through the legislature, that this was pitched as, as a form of local tax relief, for the burden of all the things that we have to do with wastewater and property taxes going up. And we have never had a discussion about swapping this money in and pulling that to give tax relief. That's integral to adopting this, as far as I'm concerned, so I, I wouldn't support it just on that basis alone, is that, hard to know what it's really gonna collect, we are gonna get money that we can't actually cap, uh, count, uh, per D O R, as receipts until next year when they certify them, but this hasn't all shaken out yet, uh, and I, I know that we've never had a discussion about reducing the Prop two and a half, uh, burden, uh, by putting this money in and allowing us to not have to tax people at the levels where, uh, taxing them. Uh, absent that larger global discussion, I couldn't support it anyway.
Any more discussion, any discussion from a, uh, comments from the audience? Cindy?
Bear with me, I did write a lot of notes down today. Our local inns, hotels, and B and B establishments-
Just, I know you well know my-
Oh, sorry, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber, sorry, Larry. Our local inns, hotels, and B and B establishments are against the additional two percent. If we are to charge our patrons an additional fee, what would stop them from exploring another town like Chatham or Dennis, both of which are at the four percent? I would like to share what our Harwich inns, B and Bs, and hotels mean to our town, and the other businesses that benefit from visitors who choose to stay in Harwich. We have a total of fourteen forms of accommodations, inns, B and Bs, hotels, and motels, that add up to three hundred and forty-seven rooms. They range from a three-room bed and breakfast to our largest, the five-star resort of Wauquasit, with a hundred and twenty. They are all locally owned, family operated businesses, which are open mainly eight months, April to November. I have spoken with many of the owners, and they are working diligently on finding ways to stay ahead of the competition locally and regionally. Each one has spent time, they are close to upgrade, renovate their properties, websites, and more. Our lodging owners partner with local restaurants, attractions, enhancing the guest experience. Their returning guests and even new ones look forward to the many things we have in Harwich, whether exploring the lavender farm, taking a cranberry bog tour, eating in our restaurants, shopping, or even attending an event such as the Harwich Cranberry Festival. Weekend, all of these will be affected if we decide to increase the local option tax. These family-owned businesses all add to the thriving community we have become. But if we add the additional two percent to, in an already challenging year with the new state mandated two point seven five, there is no guarantee the guests will stay in our family-owned businesses, or if they'll be able to continue to stay open. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Other comments? If not, entertain a motion?
To not include it in the warrant.
No, you don't need, it's not gonna be included unless there's a positive motion to include.
Okay, so we, we need no motion at all, okay.
Well, then.
We should.
You probably wanna make a-
You can make the positive motion.
We need, we need, uh-
Now, you, you, uh, the only, the only articles we've removed thus far have been by in a motion to remove it from the warrant as presented.
I would think we need some, some action.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh, three to one, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
Next item on the agenda is Article thirty-seven, Amendments to Harwich Home Rule Charter. This concerns the capital outlay plan, and, uh, Chris or Sandy?
I defer to Sandy, these are changes recommended by-
Sure can, uh, bring the microphone with you.
No, there's one there.
I put one-
Oh, you put one there, I'm sorry, wasn't paying attention.
It's a little easier. I don't know if you wanna say something first, or you just wanna make a run with it?
I'm just gonna, uh, turn it over to you.
Okay, I've, I've gone back and re-watched your meeting a couple of times from last week, trying to kind of get a handle on the discussion. I've talked to Dana a few times in the last, quite a few times in the last couple of days, about his concerns about the Finance Committee's place in, in these two articles. And I realize that, um, what, what we have is basically, um, some drafting issues. And I'll go first to-
To the capital outlay?
The capital outlay, because, and I've made some copies here, um, because the, uh, the sticking point seemed to be the nine-six-seven. Okay, um, I've revised the language, and it doesn't really have any great effect on anything.
This is different than we have in our packet, Sandy?
Yeah, it would be.
Okay.
It's in red, it's the bottom, the difference being that the, it clarifies the fact that this is not intended for articles that spring from the capital plan, but only something that somebody might put in to end run. And I think this fits with that, seems pretty close anyway. And Dana, uh, did he seem comfortable with it? Jack, you want a copy? And there are extra copies here if anybody wants them. Basically, it says, you know, with the exception, um, of petition articles-
Sandy, excuse me for interrupting.
Yes.
Let me ask you to just, uh, if you will take, uh, one minute to, uh, summarize the intent of these changes.
Okay.
As I read it, you know, briefly, what you, you're trying to do is bring it back to more of a planning.
In the beginning, the capital outlay plan was intended to be a fairly simple, straightforward document that would be easily understood by the voters at town meeting. What we have morphed into over time is this great long budget, which is a budget, not a plan, that includes a whole lot of, of stuff that the voters aren't gonna be able to poke through to find out where the, where the guts are, what, what they're actually adopting. Uh, it seeks to put some teeth back into the capital plan, so that we don't have this different plan every year, year over year, that you, you adopt a capital plan that exists for, I've said seven, Dana said he likes five better, whatever you wanna do as far as that's concerned, that adopts a five-year plan, and funds the first year in a town meeting, and then puts the rest of the four years ahead a year, and requires a two-thirds vote to change those. So it makes it difficult to-
So we have a strategic plan with-
And you have something that has some-
People to think about it.
Right, and if the town meeting agrees to change the other four years at some point, it would require a two-thirds vote to do that.
Okay.
So it just makes it a little more difficult to end-run the capital plan. And it gives the voters something, and what we used to have was a one or two-page grid. It shows maybe a half a dozen or a dozen, or whatever it might be, over, over the period of time.
Part of the achieve that by moving your threshold from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand.
That, that too, again, that's negotiable, but the essence of it is that we need to put some teeth back into our capital plan. We need to make it a document that the voters can understand when they're voting on it, and that just doesn't change from year to year, because that's not a plan. And what we have now, all due respect, is a capital budget, which is now two budgets that people have to be concerned with. Okay, so that's, that's the, that's the-
Thank you, Ed?
So, um, looking up at six, uh, nine-six-two A, um, so the way I read this is, um, projects that are being proposed as, uh, CPC projects would not be required to be on the capital plan?
Uh, I would say that CPC projects that are capital projects would be affected by the capital plan. If it's, if it's not a capital project, then-
Well, as I read it, it says, "Capital outlay shall mean the acquisition, construction, or renovation of buildings, equipment, or land have-"
Nine dash six dash two A.
With a total cost of, and it used to be fifty, now a hundred thousand during any budget year, and planning funds for any such capital outlay that may require a debt exclusion, a capital exclusion, or a proposition two and a half override. CPC projects don't require any of those.
But it says may. So they could. Uh, you could take that out entirely, probably, without losing much.
Yeah, I would agree, I would certainly like to include the CPC.
Yeah, um, just, you know, just as, just as an overview, um, what I-
Sandy, while you're looking, Don has a comment.
Yeah, and, and while we're on that same basic subject, I'm not sure that we're well-served, uh, a project that, this is all about the townspeople having some idea of what we're doing and the worthiness of each thing relative to other things.
Right.
And sequencing them that way. I'm not sure that we'd wanna drop, especially with a hundred thousand dollars, uh, drop out things that we may pay for out of free cash, because that's kind of like dropping a project from heaven, uh, just because its funding source isn't, I mean, I consider free cash real money.
Well, you might just wanna say may be eligible for, or something along those. But I want to point out, and what I should have, just leading in, is that when, when the Charter Bylaw Review Committee submitted the letter, which I gave to the office in February, we were not submitting it as, as our articles for your warrant. We were submitting this as recommendations to you. What you do with them is entirely up to you. I know you have it in the warrant as, as requested by the Selectmen and the Bylaw Committee, and if you want to leave it that way, that's fine, but I'd request that you call it the Bylaw Charter Review Committee, because that's, or not, I mean, you can do it either way. So these, as they say, these were recommendations, these weren't articles.
Michael?
Well, CPC projects could have multiple sources of funding. So, I mean, I don't see that, I actually don't see where that would be a problem, leaving that.
Well, the word is, the word is-
The library project's a good example, right, it's money-
I'm not sure why that phrase is even necessary. That may require Dana's cooking, I would strike that whole phrase.
Well, again, I'm explaining to you, it's your warrant, it's your article, you can put it in the way it is, you can rejigger it to-
Sandy, can I ask you, has, uh, has Capital Outlay Committee reviewed this?
I have only talked to Dana basically directly about it, we've been trying to put together a meeting, but it seems that schedules have been difficult, so we wanted to put together a workshop, we didn't. And honestly, when we did this, it wasn't even necessarily with the idea that it would make it into this town meeting, but it seems like people are mostly on board with where we're headed with this, so I would say why not put it in this town meeting? It doesn't take anything away from the Capital Outlay Committee, I mean, they can continue, because I, we put in here that if they, if they want to, if the town administrator wants them to, if the Selectmen want them to, they can still work on that capital budget, it's a good tool, it's just not friendly to the voters.
Do, uh, what are the board members' view on the five versus seven years? Don't speak up all at once.
Well, again, you guys-
I like the five-year better than the seven-year myself, pardon?
I'm fine with five years.
I like the five years, Dana said he liked the five years better, he gave me permission to report on our conversations, well, some of them, anyway.
Okay. Don?
Yeah, I mean, this, I have no strong feelings either way, but I'm gonna point this out, I gather that, I understand that there's been inflation since the original charter was written, but I'm not sure, uh, that we're not missing a whole bunch of projects that might need, uh, prevailing wage, for instance? If we go from fifty to a hundred?
Prevalving wage starts from dollar one on, so that's not-
We really, yeah, but we have bad history where we don't have, uh, construction projects actually have a general contractor, so we've, in the past, demonstrated, we've done them on the basis of us being the general contractor and just hiring different people in. I'd, I'd like for the project to have some visibility on the capital plan, so that there's somebody that's watching the plan. A hundred kind of drops out a whole bunch of projects.
Can I respond to this?
Sandy?
If the question tonight is whether or not to include the article.
Right.
You can include it and play with it until you're up against your printing deadline. You don't have to decide tonight what you want to do specifically. As I say, this was a recommendation, we put together some language for you, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, five years, seven years, don't care, um, that's up to you.
What I'm trying to do is, is at least move us in the direction that we're comfortable with, we can come back.
But the general direction, and you can-
Right, I got that.
Think or with the details.
Chris, and then, uh-
Just, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think that the capital out, I know the Capital Outlay Committee hasn't had a chance to really go through-
So we need to refer back to them as well.
I think just out of respect for that committee that is appointed by not only the administrator but Selectmen, uh, I think having them have the opportunity to weigh in, whether it's part of, you know, the review now and before the warrant closes, or, um, before the articles are done, it's up to the board, but I, I don't, and they don't, they don't have a meeting scheduled, they're kind of scheduling as needed, so.
Well, I was, I was given to understand that there would probably be a shortage of members to meet for a while, uh, during February and March, and we just never seemed to be able to put it together. But again, it's your article, it's your warrant, do with it as you will.
Chris, I think we need to make a decision whether to include this or not. Sandy says we can modify the wording some, so I think that's the issue we have tonight, if you want to include this.
I'd certainly be willing to come to a meeting on-
Or Ed, one of you, and then Michael, or you? Not Don, Ed, and then-
Yeah, uh, you know, one of, one of the, um, things that got amended out of the capital outlay planning process several years ago was, um, uh, the requirement that any changes that happen in the current year, um, needed to have a two-thirds, uh, approval, and, and those amendments, and changes had to be, uh, presented at town meeting, um, which, uh, in some ways was somewhat of a confusing, uh, process, I know. The last year that that requirement was in place, I worked with Pete Watson in putting together the chart of all the changes that were proposed for that year, and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Watson, who was a great capital planner, hated doing that process and, and led the drive to eliminate that from, the, uh, the capital planning process, so it's basically a new, a completely new plan every year that gets approved, with any changes you wanna make. And I, to, to a certain extent, you know, if you look at the first section on the capital plan, it's, "The purpose of the seven-year capital outlay plan shall be to provide the town with a long-range forecast of the town's major capital improvement needs and to attempt to keep the debt borrowing levels as even as possible from year to year." And if you keep on shovel, shuffling things around, um, you, you sort of lose that ability to, uh, meet that purpose, and, and, you know, and whatever changes we make, I think, I think that's a good purpose to have, um, you know. Mike's brought up, he hates to see these spikes, um, and, and, um, on the other hand, you know, uh, if, if we can figure out how to, uh, lower the spikes, so it's just a, a cons, a reasonably constant request each year, but, I, I don't know if, uh, all of these changes, um, uh, go in the direction of making, meeting that goal.
Okay, uh, Michael?
Do we agree that, I mean, is it consensus that five years, okay?
Yeah, I don't, I think that's, it goes along with our financial planning.
Is it the consensus that we go from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand? Is it the consensus that we go from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand?
Yes, for me.
If the majority agrees, yeah.
I'm not sure.
I'm okay. I, I kind of like the fifty.
I need to still think on that.
Okay.
So, I'd say we leave it at that.
Leave that where it is.
And strike the whole last part of that sentence.
And then nine, six, two, A, strike the last part of the sentence.
All the bold.
All the bold?
Yeah. All the bold.
Just put a period after capital outlay.
All right, so with that, I move that we include Article thirty-seven, Amendments to Harwich Home Rule Charter in the, in the warrant as amended. And then the only, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, now with conversation, I would like to send this to Capital Outlay, and the board can have another conversation about it, and to Sandy's point, we have until we print the warrant to make changes, but I do think this is important to put in the warrant.
So, five years, fifty thousand, and strike the last with what the intent was.
Yeah. Any more discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Ed, you're going to do it.
I'm going to, I'm going to stand the, the issue about removing the, the bold sentences about requiring a debt exclusion, capital exclusion, or a proper decision two and a half override, I want to think, think about.
Well, and I'd say any thinking that you do, if you could send that to Chris so you could include it in the report to Capital Outlay. This isn't, in my mind, in final form.
Right.
Well, I took that, by having that out, we have the flexibility to do free cash or CPC, the funding sources match up to...
But, but to Michael's point, I think there are a couple of questions that we're asking Capital Outlay. That's one of them. The fifty versus a hundred thousand is another one that, you know, might want specifically...
So, those are the questions you want opposed to Capital Outlay?
I think we'll look at the whole thing.
Chris, no. So, I think that we had a consensus on those, but to your point, it would be respectful to send it to Capital Outlay to see what they want and then hear back from them. So, I'm not saying that this is in final form, but certainly I'm saying that we should include it in the warrant.
Okay, and we vote that, so it is. Thank you, Sandy. This, Sandy, you have a comment?
Well, I, we have another one to talk about, and I just wanted to respond to something Mr. McManus said about the difficulties and the confusion. We operated this form of capital outlay plan for pretty much the entirety of my eleven years on the Board of Selectmen here, and it wasn't confusing. It wasn't hard for people to understand. It worked very well for us. So, for whatever it's worth.
Okay. Ed, then we'll stop this debate.
I'd agree.
Ed, speak up. We're having a long time.
I didn't think it was particularly confusing. The, the folks on the Capital Outlay Committee who proposed the change to eliminate that process of amendment thought it was confusing and a lot of busy work that they didn't want to be involved in. I resisted and voted against those amendments because I liked actually going through the process of amending and changing the plan and, and making the town meeting take a, a role in doing that.
Well, it's interesting that you say that because for them to say that it was busy work and confusing, and you take what's being done today and tell me that isn't a lot of busy work and confusing.
I know.
Okay.
Good for you. I'm proud of you. Okay, can we go on to the next one? Yeah.
Yeah.
Ex officio appointments. Dana was concerned that this involved the Finance Committee. That was not the intent. It's only, was meant to involve the people who are under the jurisdiction of this board. So, it'll go with speaking of language, and I think this will solve the problem. You can try it out. You may want to speak it some more, but I think it'll probably do for the moment.
And Sandy, as before, if I can ask you, when you have a chance to down again, just give us a brief overview of what the, what you're trying to do correct here.
Okay, ex officio appointments, I guess we went through quite a little dust-up in the past year or so over the length of term of someone's ex officio appointment. Because it was not made clear that the appointment only lasted for the term of that person's service on the board who was sending the appointment in to the Board of Selectmen. It was also not clear that the Board of Selectmen should have the right to ratify those appointments. So, that's what this is trying to clear up.
And if I may, why don't you read part of this and how this is going to solve that problem?
Well, what it does is...
The people in the audience in the...
What it does is it just moves the language about it being under the, the whole, the whole thing. You want me to read just the whole thing for you?
Right, go ahead, the short.
In order to ensure that the terms of ex officio appointees made by any official board, committee, or commission under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen do not exceed, exceed the terms of their appointments to the sending boards or sending entity, all such appointments shall run for one year or less to end on June thirtieth of the then fiscal, then-current fiscal year. In the event of a resignation or inability to serve by an ex officio appointee, either from the sending entity or as an ex officio appointee, the term of the replacement shall expire in accordance with the term of the original appointee. Any such ex officio appointment shall be subject to the approval by vote of three or more members of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Is there any comments or questions on, on this? You know, it seems straightforward, but if not, anyone from the audience, any comment? Question? Michael?
Move that we include Article thirty-eight, Amendments to Ex officio Members as amended in the warrant. Second.
Second. Ed?
Yeah. I'm looking at the, our existing town, town charter and looking at Section seven dash one. Charter I have only goes up to seven dash one dash four, and this appears to be amending a Section seven dash one dash five.
It's a new section.
Which, is it being...
Adding.
Adding in the...
We had no policy on ex officio appointments.
So, what's the, so all of this is new, or is it being moved from elsewhere?
It's new.
Okay. Okay.
Good, good question.
You probably should have new on there, just identify that.
Having the strikeouts and, and the red makes it look like you're mending something that's already in existence.
Oh, okay, I understand.
Yeah, you know, and I couldn't find it. What are we ending?
The one that was sent to you by our committee back in February was, was this language without the strikeouts and the reds. So, whatever you're seeing has been stricken as stuff that you already had previously from us, okay?
Don, your addition comment?
Yeah, I mean, to Mr. McManus's point, we've been bouncing this around for about a year and a half now because we did not have, like the CPC when the charter was originally written. It was unclear because some of the committees were under the belief that they could vote for their own member, and it was just a courtesy to send us their appointment. This makes it clear that the committees under our jurisdiction have to submit somebody, but we have to affirmatively vote them. It makes it clear that their term can only be, you know, a year at a time so that we don't find people who have no underlying committee appointment, but they still have the ex officio appointment. It just clarifies a whole bunch of things that we've been winging for a year and a half, so it's, it's a welcome change.
Just to clarify one point, your CPC is, is outlined in great detail in your bylaws and how long their terms are and where they're from, so that's a little kind of a different animal, but...
We're going to have to get to that at some point, though, because ex officio by its very definition, it means from, out of the office. And if you don't hold the underlying office, they don't really have the right to be able to continue to serve under those circumstances. So, somewhere or another, they've got to align...
I think we go back and review that because that CPC has a lot of mandates from the state that's outside of our control as well.
Maybe, but you can't have a three-year term if somebody leaves their underlying committee a year later.
What, what we need to look at next is the definition of ex officio that's contained in the charter because I came across that in the course of all this other. And what ex officio means in the charter says you can't vote. And we need to, I mean, it, it doesn't mean that globally, it means that from our charter, and I think that's the next thing we need to look at is how to resolve that language, too.
That's an interesting comment because we've used that definition in a couple of county committees I've been on, that the ex officials can't, well, the Cape Cod Cooperative, for instance, the ex officio members...
Well, maybe there's a way to distinguish true ex officio from statutory or...
That's a good point. We can, we can define ourselves any way we want.
Right, yes.
Okay, we're in power.
Did you vote?
We did not. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And just one, just one more quickie. When you're working on the budget, don't forget that next year we've got to mail these proposed charter changes out to every household in Harwich.
Yeah.
So, you need to make some allowance for that if you haven't already.
Yeah, we had some discussion with the town clerk. She's going to try to see when we send out the census package, if we can include that in there, so she'll probably do it as part of the census.
Whatever works.
I did note that we have some money in the budget for that, Chris.
Yeah, it's also your budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to the next is Article sixty-three. Amend the code of the Town of Harwich General Bylaws, Chapter eight, Department revolving funds, funds established. Chris, you want to speak to this, and then Ed, I think you have specific concerns about this as well, right, revolving funds?
Yeah, I think, I, I thought we did put this in. The only thing that, I thought you voted to have it in, I, I thought that the one thing, and I realize that we didn't get to the language of putting in a, the obligation for a quarterly report from each of the responsible parties and that that quarterly report, under the authorization to spend, that a quarterly report would be presented to administration for review of all the spending, and then we could make that available to the board members. I thought we would put that at the bottom of the chart so that we'd applies to all.
And I like that very much. That's good. Any other, Ed, I think you had just some comments about being sure that the revolving funds amounts were appropriate.
Not so much the, the amounts, but whether the new chart we were formulating was sufficiently detailed on the original approvals of setting up of the, the funds. So, by streamlining the process and going to charts, we weren't, in fact, changing the original approval authorization and...
Yeah, what's your suggestion on that to provide some more explanation?
Carol did go through what she had indicated at the, at the, at the budget meeting, that she had gone through the original intent to try to capture what the original intent was. If there's something above and beyond, you know, we're all human, that let us know and we can, we can put those in. But she said that she did do a pretty careful study of it, so I, I trust that she did.
And so do I, you know.
So, the...
Checking, checking last year's town meeting warrant and this year's, the, the definitions, use of funds, revenue sources, and, and discussion of authorization, who's authorized to spend the funds have been expanded to capture the original language.
Okay.
And I, unless we, something comes up over time, I'm fairly well satisfied that you've done that.
So, it sounds like we're, the only addition we're asking for is the quarterly report to be built in that.
Yeah, and just...
I'm okay with this as a starting point, but I have said consistently that we have increased our reliance on these funds a lot. I, I take note of wrecking youth, you know, going up to what, a hundred seventy-five thousand a year? I remember when it was just for T-shirts and some ancillary equipment. To the extent that there's, there's serious money going out of these funds, that there is no way for, for the public currently to know what the money was spent on except generically. There's no reporting system. There was no oversight and, and review. And I feel real uncomfortable about that because if you had office supplies in your budget, you couldn't go out and hire a temp employee with that if there was a direct appropriation. And yet, we're providing a mechanism for people to go off the grid. So, as a starting point, the quarterly reports are good, but there's nothing inside the black box because you're not allowed to go into it. And that concerns me. There should be some sort of accountability, almost like it, that parallels a regular budget, where there's line items or, or something. Now, I know that doesn't make them as nimble, but these things weren't designed to have that kind of cash flowing through them and allow for, you know, some serious stuff to happen. I mean, we, we're doing, I think the Evergreen Cemetery was done through revolving fund, and that was a pretty substantial project. There's, again, the wrecking youth is at a hundred seventy-five thousand. We need to take a bigger look at this next, as we go along next year so that once the quarterly reports are done and we know what's inside the black box, then we know what problems could occur, and we can address them that way. So, this is a, to me, this isn't an end. It's a beginning.
Ed, or Chris?
I just, on, on the language, it just kind of penned something out here. So, each party of, each party of authorization to spend fund will provide on a quarterly basis a report on all spending to the town administrator and Board of Selectmen. If that wording or something to that facsimile is reasonable.
It's okay with me.
Me, too.
Ed, you have a comment?
Well, I was looking for the wrecking youth, the revolving fund. Which category does it fall under? Or is it one that needs to be approved every year?
That's one that sixty-three is the bylaw change, and then I think it's sixty-seven that does the...
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, thank you. Does the actual dollar amount, and the recreation is under that, the one seventy-five is under sixty-six. So, there's no recommended change to the bylaw, so it wouldn't have to be updated?
Hi, Michael?
I would agree with Don on the starting point. Some of these funds, Chris, seem to me that they've gotten very large, and some of this probably should be, maybe we get each one of them before us. Some of this should be put into budget items at this point. If it's a program that's been going on for fifteen years, they probably don't need to have it in their revolving.
And maybe when you have your committee reports come in, we can include that as an element of it.
So, on the rec, Recreation Revolving Fund, what, what are the items that it's available to be expended for?
I don't recall. It's something I had in, sorry. Most of those are programs, but I, I don't know what the definition is.
Do they hire?
They do hire part-time people, absolutely.
So, if you have swimming lessons and you initially hired twelve instructors and, and you had sign-ups and needed to hire two more, had you not had the flexibility, you would tell two classes of kids, sorry, you don't get... I mean, that's the sort of flexibility that, and to the, to the extent that we've added programs or programs have expanded, it counts for most of the increase in the cost.
I think traditionally, the way he does it is he has a signup program, and if, to use your example, if ten people sign up, then he runs it. If eight people signs up, he doesn't run it. And then if fifteen people sign up, then he may have to see if they can get additional instructors. So, I think it does have some elements of nimbleness, but we could certainly get a sense for the scope of how much that money generates and what the programs are.
Yeah, Don?
Yeah, my only point with this is the nimbleness stops and the ability to manipulate begins if you don't have any strict criteria. And that same nimbleness thought could be used to backfill for an actual employee for a short period of time. I don't think we ever intended that to be the case. And I don't know that there's any specific prohibition for that.
There is. You, you can't use, you can't use a revolving account to have full-time employees.
I'm not talking about a full-time employee. I'm talking about a temp that may come in for like a month or a certain number of hours, but we don't even know that that's the case because we're not actually auditing them. And I've said before, there's a difference between jurisdictionally having the authority to expend from and accountability from outside of that organization, like Carol and you, to be able to see what's going on. I think it's really important that somebody actually looks at these things periodically.
Michael?
Chris, do we need a motion? I thought we voted this one.
I would like to have the motion just to recommend the change that was added to it. I think that's...
I move that we approve Article sixty-three in the warrant as amended.
Do you second?
Second.
Just a discussion point. I don't want to go off the deep end, but philosophically... Just a discussion point. I don't want to go off the deep end, but philosophically, I'm a little concerned just by the number of revolving funds we've had, because, you know, boards of selectmen are not perfect, but we keep trying to move funds out that we no longer have control over. So we have, you know, it's grown from, you know, a few revolving funds, and now what, we have twelve, fourteen of them that try to separate out. I don't want to be too negative. It was almost like a, a slap that the board of selectmen can't be trusted to manage the funds, so. Just a, it's not, I'm not debating that. It's just my observation. That I'd like to bring it back some point to zero, like, or at least bring us back into the fold, but. We have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to comment on that, my?
Well, I do, because, you know, it's the intent, the reason why we moved, created a number of these revolving funds is to segment out revenues that were brought in by the golf course, by the harbor, so they didn't just sort of disappear in the general fund, which, which was traditionally what was happening.
Right. And we moved those enterprise funds, so those large ones we have, but I.
Well, they're not, but the, the only enterprise fund we have is the water department.
Okay, so we have a couple. We, I don't think we need fourteen of them, or we have now. Any case, as I said, that's my, my, it's my philosophical opinion on the matter. I'd like to move on now to, the next one is approval of the annual town meeting warrant and possible vote to sign.
So if, obviously, there was changes made tonight, what I would like to recommend is, I, I recorded all the changes, so we'll put those in, and then we'll give you a clean copy for the next meeting.
So recommendations for the individual articles eventually?
We have to do the recommendations at some point.
Because they have to be printed, too.
Actually, the way the, the way it's been done in the past is, we need to give a clean warrant, so we would vote the clean warrant on the eleventh. Then, if the board's pleasure, to then go through the different ones.
One by one and vote up or down.
We, well, this, the board has not actually put their recommendations into the warrant, previously into the warrant book. The only recommendation that's go in there, well, three, planning board tends to put theirs in, CPC and FinCom, obviously, for all of them. But it's really a call for the board, if we do record that information, and the votes can be done. I, I think the target here is the end of March. There's no reason why we couldn't try to get those in the book, but that's really if the board wants to have their votes in or not. You have not historically done that.
Chris, just on Article thirty-three, Cemetery Arboretum Project. So I, I imagine it's going to be in the description, which we, we haven't seen any of yet.
Yeah, if there's anything you want an explanation on, let me know and we'll put it in there.
Saturday's meeting, I learned that the estimated cost is thirty thousand one hundred and ten, plus seven thousand dollars coming out of their revolving fund, plus five thousand a year for three years in software updates. So I think it's important that the public understands that they're not just voting thirty thousand one hundred and ten dollars. That there's another twenty-two thousand dollars coming out over a three-year period. So I'd like to see that. And I know Robin hasn't been before us, or the Cemetery Commission hasn't been before us to describe any of this yet, but I'd like to make sure everybody understands exactly what it is.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mike. So I, I assume we're okay with bringing back a clean copy next week? And then the week after that, there'll be agenda item that we can start voting on.
Yeah, the board may want to think about what sequence, is, is there any sequence you want to see in particular?
Okay. Is everyone okay with that? You okay with that, Dana? You're a... I shouldn't have asked, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to be late. Yes, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Dana.
That's why we brought you in here, just to say that.
You're dressed up. I had to give you a chance. Town administrators' report in, twenty nineteen winter peer group meetings.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a couple items. Just Andrea Eldana, who is the person from CDP that is helping us, has put together a group called the Lower Cape Peer Group Meeting. It is March seventh in Brewster. And just to kind of read, this is for folks that may be interested, two thousand nineteen Winter Peer Group Meetings, quarterly housing conversations for municipal officials and staff. The Lower Cape Peer Group is Orleans, Brewster, Chatham, and Harwich. They're having a meeting this Thursday, March seventh, from three to five, at the Brewsters Lady Library at eighteen twenty-two Main Street, obviously over in Brewster. And we have this actually, I think, in the materials, so people should be able to look at it. But if you just email andrea@capecdp.org, if you're interested in attending that. And then these peer group meetings are a discussion space for municipal officials and staff who are involved in housing production. Eligible participants include current members of the Select Board, Finance Committee, Planning and Zoning Board, Community Preservation Committee, Housing Trust, Housing Committee, Housing Authority, and Town Staff. I do have a, another commitment, so I'm not going to be able to make that. I think Charlene's going to make it, but if other members have an interest, please sign up.
I'll be making that meeting.
Good.
Excellent.
I will comment. I think a couple of us went to their training sessions a couple of years ago. A month or so ago, I went to a follow-up meeting of, of those, and these have always been very good discussions. So I'm happy you're going and we'll see who else can get there.
A year ago also.
Yeah, Don?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Is there any way of proactively reaching out to the ZVA particularly because they have jurisdiction over forty Bs? Love them to attend this, but I don't want to bring them in here next week and say, you know, last Thursday, you could have gone. So if somebody could reach out to them.
Yeah, we'll send it to them. It's a good idea. The next item was on real estate and open space. They did submit a report that, I guess I didn't make the package for the last meeting, but the, they did weigh in on the Affordable Housing Trust. They, so, it's kind of a short letter here. So we, members of the Affordable Housing Trust, myself and and Charlene, met with them and went over the votes of the Affordable Housing Trust for the five different properties. They did vote their full support. They did not vote to support, and subsequently was taking off. It was the Earl Road property. And then they voted conditional support on the Zero Depot Road because there are parcels that contain two vernal pools and part of a wildlife corridor. So I think as part of, I think it was the intent of the Affordable Housing Trust that we would not obviously do anything to affect the vernal pools or the wildlife corridors. So any development that was, be done in that would take those elements into account. So we appreciate the real estate and open space support for those articles.
I may have missed this, maybe it was last week, but what the issue was with the Earl Road property?
Yeah, Earl Road, in the review of the deeds, it had been given to the town, I believe it was in nineteen forty-four. The purpose of it had changed a couple of different times, and I had at least some question. I think the Affordable Housing Trust had some significant question, too, with each of those changes. Certainly Article ninety-seven, which protects land for traditionally open space, has three criteria to it, that you have to have Conservation Commission approval, town meeting approval by two-thirds vote, and two-thirds of vote of the legislature. And the, the, not the law, but the case law, if you would, on that, has been moving a little bit. The Supreme Judicial Court has ruled that not everything that is open space falls under Article ninety-seven. So parkland may, recreation may not. There's, there's been a clarification of some of that. So we're trying to figure out what all that case law means, quite honestly. But it was confusing enough to not go forward with it for this year.
I think, Michael, did you, now get you, Don?
Chris, just on the J-three, J-four, J-six on Zero Depot, can we get that report from Real Estate and Open Space? Or is that it right there?
That's it right there. I, I think the intent of the, and, and Don certainly serves on the trust, too, is that we wouldn't do development in those areas, but for sewer, for septic purposes, we may want to count the total land area. So there would be no development in that area, but we would want to make sure that we got credit for it, not remove that from consideration for development purposes.
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I do want to add to this. In addition to the, the concerns that were just expressed by Chris.
Which property are you talking about, Don?
Earl Road first, and then all of them.
Thank you.
Second. In addition to all of that, we really didn't have a whole heck of a lot of time to discuss with some of the local people there, that change. There was no point in pressing the issue at town meeting if they weren't fully informed about what's going on, which leads me to the second part of this. The Housing Trust uses these as assets. That doesn't mean ultimately that they are required to build on them.
Right.
What they can do, if they decide as a committee, that this parcel is worth a lot, but it's worth even more to the town to sell it to the general public, get it back on the tax rolls, and buy even better or more property to do something else with, that also could occur. So that part of the equation hasn't really been fully discussed with the public, and I think they really need to understand that.
Good point. Okay?
So I have just two more items. I, I do want, Matt Hart has been kind of patiently in the back there waiting, so I want to give him really a lot of credit for kind of spearheading and, and putting together. He's gone out and researched what's called a Community Development Block Grant, which is a federal program, and he's helped to put together, I mean, he's done the primary work on it, a application to see if we could do sidewalk work throughout the, the Harwich Center area, from the cultural center to the community center. And I just wanted to, I guess, yield some of my time to Matt, so if he wanted to comment on his.
And let me just say that Matt has spent considerable amount of time, put together a document I can't imagine doing, and great work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt Hark, Chairman of the Hark, Harwich.
Of the Hark, the committee?
Not Hart, Hark, Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. This kind of grew out of the fact about two years ago, when I was encouraged to become part of this committee, we discovered that a lot of the towns in Massachusetts had not conformed to having the self-analysis to look at the ADA regulations. We went ahead and got a amount of money from the state to run the survey. And a curious thing happened. When we went to the next step, the, the study was primarily focused on municipal buildings, and we're still in the process of making them in conformity. We've got five years to do it. But we discovered, and Chris and I walked the sidewalks, and I found out that not in the municipal buildings, but the sidewalks on Oak Street, Main Street, and Zisson Road were really in terrible shape. And they were briefly mentioned in this, in the consulting study. So with the help of the committee, we went after the, the funds for this. What was unusual about it is this fund, which is the Community Development Block Grant, which is federal money, twenty-two million dollars this year, allowing each community that is a smaller community to go after a minimum of, not a minimum, but a maximum of eight hundred thousand dollars. What had happened is they made it a requirement this year that you had to have completed the self-analysis, the ADA compatible, and it opened up all kinds of problems. What I thought was going to be a simple process, applying for a, a grant, like we did with the other one, all of a sudden added twenty-six elements to it, which I won't go into the details, but most of them were repetitive requirements because they had different people qualifying each town. In any event, it's completed, and I think we have a better-than-average chance of getting it. If we did get that grant, it would come back to the selectman that you wanted to approve it and do it, but it was focused on new sidewalks in the existing location, better crosswalks, and potentially, the recommendation was two traffic lights in, on Main Street in Howard Center at the, at those crosswalks. I've been working very closely with the committees in Boston, and they believe we have a, an excellent opportunity. The, the final submission deadline is next, I think, the eighth. We completed it today, and I want to thank Chris and Larry as part of the energy. I, I hope we're successful. And if so, I hope it'll be a, kind of a spearhead to help revitalize Howard Center. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions from anyone? Comments?
Where does the, where does the grant get reviewed?
Where does the grant get reviewed?
Yeah, the, the application.
Up in Boston in the housing development section.
Community and housing development at the state.
State level.
State level. Federal money administered by the state.
They have, they get this every year, Ed, and it's a certain amount of money. It's twenty-two million this year. And it's for the smaller communities, for this type of project. Some, it's a lot of other things. That's why it was so complicated. All we're looking at is a sidewalk. Some of the petitions or requirements are much more.
This is the grant. Reminder of one that Matt is Chair of our Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee.
That's correct.
And he's always looking for more members. We, we could use additional members, so I'm hoping whoever's watching this will step forward, because this is a very critical committee.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Chris?
And then just the last item, as we.
Thank you, Matt.
We distributed around tonight, the, you know, we did, Carol put this together involving the town. A question was asked on Saturday about the balances. So we did provide that balance information. That concludes my report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Selection report, Michael?
I have nothing.
Don?
Two things. First, as long as you're recruiting through TV, I will, too. We need wastewater support committee members, so I'm hoping that people seeing this will heed that call. Secondarily, this is one of the cool things that you get to do as a selectman, and frankly, the general public could do it. I had the pleasure of being at the fire department on Friday for the swearing-in for the probationary firefighter that was appointed. We have a strong chief, we adopted a strong chief process, so the chief himself does those things. But it's, it's great. We have a terrific fire department. The way they not only hire, but bring up people through the ranks, and they're ready to go and take responsibility and actually become a fire chief someday. It's just a terrific department. It was a wonderful time to be there.
Ed?
Yeah, two items. One, for you fellow members, this Friday is the monthly meeting of the Selectment Counselors Association. It's in Falmouth at eight-thirty this month, and it's the annual meeting with their legislative delegation.
I've missed that again.
You've missed it again.
My helicopter's out for.
They've been asked to make comment on the state's potential actions this year on programs for coastal resiliency and amendments to zoning and housing production programs. And comments on the implementation of the expansion of the rooms tax program. Second item is, oh, tomorrow morning, I'll be going up to Boston to MMA for the monthly meeting of the Municipal and Regional Affairs Committee, Policy Committee. We'll be getting our annual laying out a work program on what issues we want to, the association will be pushing for in the legislative session that's just started, obviously, with the governor's announcements on Wednesday of his housing and zoning reform package. That'll be, one of the issues will take up. The other issue also, because both the legislature and the governor have made coastal resiliency, coastal preparedness a big issue will be. But if there are any other issues that you want, we'll be, please pass them along, and we'll see if we can, I can get them inserted in the work program for the coming year.
I want the state to pay for special ads costs, since it's a lottery, who gets that cost?
Unfortunately, that's the, the Finance Policy Committee meeting.
I, I do have a suggestion that, that we, I'd like to, to bring back the. Uh, I, I do have a, uh, suggestion that, that we, uh, I'd like to, to, uh, bring back the wastewater support committee as an agenda item to, to see if that charge needs to be tweaked. Now, we have a rollover. I say that because, uh, part of the requirement of the, Sharon knows and points out to me, part of the requirement of the, uh, DEP on this and Cape Cod Commission is that we have a, a specific technical review committee, which may be, uh, the charge may be slightly different in that, to meet that requirement. While we're re-looking at it, continue what you're doing by just saying we should bring that back and, and, uh, relook at it to be sure we're on line with our, uh, our requirements.
And to be clear, you guys are okay with us...
I am, because they'll probably be about the same people. They'll probably be about the same people, but I think we, we're doing this, now's the time to see if we need to tweak it to, uh, be sure we conform with the, uh, DEP and, and the, uh, Cape Cod Commission. So we can put that on as an item later. And I'm, I'm losing my mind as well, but, uh, there is a great, uh... There is a great-looking concert coming up this Saturday evening at the, just revitalized, uh, East Harwich, uh, the church.
South Harwich.
South Harwich Church. I've already, I've already bought my tickets. Uh, one of the, uh, is, uh, Clancy, who's a great musician. And so I'm going to be there at seven o'clock enjoying myself. The day of entertainment...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Michael, thank you all in favor.